And welcome, ladies and gentlemen. They're being bad up here. Welcome to the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners. I called to order the business meeting this February 25th, 2015. Oh, 16. I only lost a year. Oh, Marriott says 15 on here. Two hours. Man, my script. What happens when my script comes apart? And now, Mr. Crupp, our county administrator, will call our roll.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. Of course, this is your last meeting of February, so it looks like it's going to be a wonderful spring, as I'm looking at the window outside, looking forward to that. Joining us this morning is Mr. Chris Story, representing County Council. And also, serving as your clerk of the board, is Kevin Moss this morning. And by the way, it's Kevin's birthday.
It's Kevin's birthday. We'll do something special here in a minute, Kevin.
So I'll start with the roll. Commissioner Bernard?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Chair Ludlow?
Here. Commissioner Schrader is excused. You please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Actually, Chair, I was thinking we actually have three birthdays. Well, not necessarily one today, but to our left, our right, two of these birthdays. Is it Tuesday or Wednesday?
The third.
Mine is March 1st.
Jim's Tuesday.
I finally hit 50.
Yeah.
Well, that's a good one, Jim.
Well, getting back to the weather, I dress this way because it's going to be 65 today, folks, in February. So it's a great day. And now, we will go to citizens' communication. I have one. And that is from Mr. Steve Shop.
Hello, Commissioners. I'm Steve Shop, and I live in Toowallton. And there's been some interesting developments with Trimet and attempted fund their ongoing misadventure with the CRC, of course, and Southwest Corridor, and their work with Metro. And there seems to be an impression from Trimet that both Trimet and Metro have had head transplants. And now, they're out there trying to shake the bushes for funding for your roads, for I-205 and 217. But isn't it interesting that this bill, this passed out of committee in Salem, which is far worse than the one you already opposed, 1521, call it 1510A, that Washington County supports it, under this notion, well, they could get some money for perhaps 217. And there's been suggestions of 205, it's good for Clackamas County. Well, think about this. When Trimet was rounding, going around guarding support for this bill, they didn't even tell Clackamas County? This letter was put together a month ago, and they went out and got the Portland Business Alliance, the Columbia Corridor Association, Trimet, Oregon State Building and Construction Trades Council, and Washington County to sign on to support it. And what did they support? Regional conversations are underway regarding how to finance investments to address the transportation needs of Portland metropolitan area. Senate Bill 1510 would provide another tool to help fund future transportation projects that would help address congestion, freight bottlenecks, and transit needs, and improve access to jobs in larger metropolitan regions. That is rhetoric for the CRC, verbatim. Where was this bill? This bill was stuck in a bill for the Hood River Bridge redesignation for a process for federal and planning to replace it. The only reason this bill even surfaced is because I, myself, and John Charles, were down there for 1521, when Trimet was invited up to speak on 1510. Curious, why would they be speaking on a Hood River bill? So you can imagine how ridiculous it is to suggest that this bill is about roads, from an agency that could care less about roads. And what it actually does is open the spigot and allow Trimet to go well beyond their restricted current law of what funds they can use, which is very narrow. This allows them to go with their partners and put together any kind of package you can conceive, involving vehicle registration fees, gas taxes, and any other kind of revenue bonds that would be reimbursed by partners, such as Ctran, or Bultoma County, or anybody involved, or Metro. More federal grant money is at stake, flex funds, you name it. It's the whole hopper. It's handing over to Trimet authority to use all these funding types without identifying any funding sources, or what the money would be used for. And I urge the county commission to align like in the 1521 and oppose this bill. Thank you.
Right on the nose, Steve. Place us on issues for next Tuesday, and the board will take up whether they want to oppose 1521. 1510, excuse me. We've already opposed 1521. We took a neutral stand initially, because we actually didn't think this bill was going to go anywhere. And now, it's time to get a little more aggressive, I think, with it. So thank you for your testimony. And now, I mean, it's hard to believe, considering our last business meeting, but there's no more citizen comments. So we have some business to attend to. Mr. Crupp?
Yes, this is a previously approved land use issue, and you are to consider a board order that would approve a comprehensive plan amendment and zone map amendment from Mr. John Brosey, Goby Walnut, and Western Hardwoods. It's previously approved by the board on October 28th, 2015. Mr. Nate Boderman from the County Council's office is here to explain the proposal.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nate Boderman, County Council's office. As Mr. Crupp said, the item this morning is for purposes of adopting an order related to a comprehensive plan amendment and zone change application for John Brosey, Goby Walnut, and Western Hardwoods affecting property commonly referred to as 25408 South Highway 99 East in Aurora, Oregon 97002. Specifically, this board order approves two separate applications. The two applications are as follows. An amendment to the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan to redesignate a portion of the subject property from agricultural to rural industrial. A corresponding zone change from exclusive farm use to rural industrial. These applications are identified as planning numbers Z0294-15-CP and Z0295-15-ZAP. Planning Commission conducted public hearings on this matter on September 28th, 2015, and unanimously voted to recommend that the board approve the applications. This board conducted public hearings on the matter on October 28th, 2015, at which time testimony and evidence were presented. This board unanimously voted to approve the applications with the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Zone Map Amendment limited to that area which is identified in Exhibit B to the board order, and limited to the uses identified in Exhibit A to the board order, both of which are attached in your materials. The board then directed staff to prepare the findings and draft the board order to finalize this decision. So that's why we're here this morning. The board order before you today will approve the two applications that I've just described, in which you have previously approved. So Planning Staff has included extensive findings in your packet. Those are attached as Exhibit A to the board order, certainly Staff's recommendation that you go ahead and approve these two applications. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioner Bernard?
So, just to clarify, this was an industrial use, rural industrial use already. We're just kind of cleaning it up and making sure that it meets the requirements.
Well, it was zoned EFU, zoned, and then designated agricultural. But recall, this is where top of the hill, RV Park, was. And so, there was some testimony as to the historic commitments to the uses out there. It was processes or reasons application, so we don't have to get into the technical land use details. But there was some evidence in the record about the historical uses not really being consistent with the agricultural designations that were on the property.
Yeah. And I actually drove by it the other day and just checked it out again. So, thank you.
Any further questions, Commissioners? All right. There is no public hearing, so entertain a motion.
I move we approve the board order approving a comprehensive plan amendment and zone map amendment from John Brosey, Goby Walnut, Western Hardwoods, as previously approved at the October 28th, 2015 land use hearing.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Savis. Further discussion? All right. Kevin?
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye. Passes 4-0. Now, Mr. Crupp, we have a series of public hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first public hearing this morning is to consider a board order that would refer an advisory measure to the voters in May of 2016 to pursue public funding of county road maintenance. And we have Mr. Chris Story here from County Council to discuss this with you, along with our Director of Transportation and Development, Barbara Cartnell.
You have been considering remedies to procure funds to maintain the current road system. Over 50% of Clackamas County's 1,400 mile road miles are in fair or poor condition, rather than good or excellent condition. Every year, the condition of a greater percentage of roads deteriorates, and the county doesn't have the revenue to keep them up. The total need is more than $265 million to bring all roads to good or excellent condition. That shortage of $17 million annually, which increases every year it goes unaddressed. Road maintenance funds are primarily from gas tax and vehicle registration fee revenues. State law forbids using ad valorem or property taxes for roads. You've considered options for raising additional road funds. You've looked at gas taxes, utility fees, vehicle registration fees, and road districts. You've looked at limiting funding packages to time-specific performance, such as five-year or seven-year completion periods. And you've directed the preparation of road packages, road paving packages, combinations of roads for immediate maintenance, and what those might look like, their locations in the county. As a prelude to putting a request before the voters on the November ballot, you've proposed an advisory question for the May 2016 ballot. That question is, shall the county pursue a vehicle registration fee for a limited number of years to pay for deferred road maintenance? The board order before you is your direction for placement of the question on the May ballot.
I have a question. You have suggested that we change a word. What word is that?
That word, I did use it in the question. Shall the county pursue a vehicle registration fee for a limited? Initially, at our policy session, we had amount of years, and that actually read a little awkward. It refers to something other than a specific timeline. So I proposed for a limited number of years. So the word "number" would replace "amount" from your previous direction.
Just writing this down, because there's a lot more to it, because I'm changing it as we're sitting here, right? All right. So any clarification needed by Commissioners?
Perhaps your cup might be blocking my line.
My cup is blocking that. Says Commissioner Schrader, but it's not. It's Commissioner Savis.
Thank you. We worked really hard a couple Tuesdays ago to get consensus on what that ballot language would say. And I think there were two principles that, you know, I think we all believe in, I think, to some degree, which got us to the five oh vote. As number one, is identifying the limited number of years, and identifying that, the question of putting it to a vote of the people. And I know that the last six weeks or so, we've been, some of us, I've been pretty steady on that, but I'm concerned that we've, what we had the public discussion on last Thursday, the statement then was, that we agreed upon, was, shall the county pursue voter-approved funding for deferred road maintenance and safety improvements on November's 2016 ballot? And to me, that, we talked Tuesday, and Commissioner Smith, which I don't disagree with, was advocating for the limited number of years. But I've got a little bit of concern about taking the voter-approved funding piece out. And, you know, I've been solid on that, and I know that there was discussion in early January or late January about not putting it to a vote. And I'm, and this seems to be that from last Thursday, we're moving from that agreement we would put it to a vote to not really including the voter-approved funding in the ballot language there. So I've got a suggestion, and I'm going to pass one to the legal counsel as well, but here's a copy of the worksheet that includes, this is the Tuesday worksheet, includes what we talked about last week in the public hearing. So it's some language I'm suggesting that puts voter-approved funding back in, and the limited number of years. And so, I'll, yes.
Can we have the public hearing first?
Okay, you, okay.
Well, it might make a difference as to what is proposed, let alone what is voted on by this board. So I'd prefer to have the public, because that's what it's listed as, the public hearing will be next. Unless there's any further clarifications needed, I'll open the public hearing, and I do have somebody who wishes to speak.
Morning.
Good morning.
My name is Ron LeBlanc. First, I would like to state for the record, last Thursday, February 18th, I addressed this board of Commissioners and made comments that were my personal opinion, and were in fact not an official position of the Clackamas County Republican Party. As I told Chair Ludlow in a telephone conversation this past Monday, the comments were based solely upon my experiences with a local city government, and not that of this board. For that, I apologize. Secondly, the Executive Committee of the Clackamas County Republican Party met last night. They voted, and has taken official position on this matter. It is as follows, I'm going to read it verbatim. The CCRP Executive Committee supports the Board of County Commissioners referring an advisory vote to the voters in May, so long as any tax or fee to be implemented goes to a vote of the people in November, with a plan for how the money will be spent, and includes a sunset. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you for your statements. I appreciate them. Mr. LeBlanc?
Thank you, Ron. I know that was tough. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. I'm Steve Shop. I live in Toowallton. Well, the notion of an advisory vote, I've always liked, and I thought that municipalities and counties should use it more often, because it's a good way to tap into the public's mind and test their sentiment. And so, when I heard you were going to embark on that, I thought, well, that's fabulous. And I presumed the purpose would be to gain as much from the public as possible. And then, watching in, with conversations with various people and things, it appears that just the opposite has landed in your lap, that the ultimate advisory vote will now seek the least amount of information from the public possible. Including the, when I heard about the removal of voter approval off of it under a dubious justification, I'm glad you're talking about putting it back on. But I know all the daylight's burnt up, and you have no more time left. So you can't put any more questions on there hardly. I mean, if you could, you could encourage staff to maybe get busy and do it, but, you know, that's like moving an iceberg, you know? Not to say anything about staff, I'm talking about the time constraints. But it's unfortunate, and I know you have other questions that are in the gearbox, you could put them back on there, and maybe ask the public what they thought about a gas tax or vehicle registration fee, and arm yourself with more information as you move forward in November. But gee whiz, this seems like a typical government, anything but the right thing. And it wasn't that tough a thing a couple weeks ago to put this together and find out how the public feels, instead of, you know, drugging along and ending up where you are now. And it looks like, you know, if you don't have enough information, you might just stumble like Washington County did, without any more innovative and creative approach that you had available. So I would at least encourage you to put the question back the way it should be, and make it clear that you're proposing to get some information about a voter-approved idea. But, you know, time is gone, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Shop. The, yeah, I actually came up with, I saw, I'd like to go first. I have a good one, too. I'd like to also get those two words back in there, and I've got an idea for a change, just like Commissioner Savis does. I think it's very important that we have voter-approved in there. You know, the question is, after, after we decide on this, shall we, and I think we should, continue to poll the public to find out exactly what kind of a fee or a tax that is palatable to them? So, you know, I'm, even though, and I said this last Tuesday, at C4, the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, it's a lot of cities in there, and the cities, Commissioner Savis asked for a vote, and I think it was an appropriate question, to ask what they thought about what their preferred method is of collecting additional money for road maintenance. It was overwhelming, the cities said, that they like vehicle registration fee, because we're mandated to share 40% of those monies with them. So, you know, I'm inclined to say, I'm going to work with our cities, because they will benefit some $3 million off of a $25 vehicle registration fee. We'll get about 5.1, I think they're a little over 3. And $3 million is a lot to these cities. They have other methods, almost all of them can impose a transportation fee, and many of them have. We don't have that ability. So I am in favor of some kind of change, and we're going to go over that in just a moment after we hear from Commissioner Smith.
Well, I agree with the last speaker. I think all of us Commissioners would like the word voter-approved in there, and I think we were prepared today to come and discuss it. Just let staff know, because for us, it's very important, and I think the message can be the same, but it's very important we say voter-approved. Now, once we decide that question, I'll hold the rest of my statements, because I do have some questions regarding the explanatory statement, some wording in it, but I'll hold off on that until we finish what we need to do here first.
Fair enough. Commissioner Bernard?
So we're done with the public testimony? There's nobody else?
Good point. Close of public hearing. Thank you. Go ahead.
So I actually have a sentence that's 18 words.
Really?
Yeah.
We only have three of them here. Before any motions are made, we should probably go through those to see what Savis got.
Yeah, so I just, so, so, shall the county pursue voter approval to increase vehicle registration fee, registration, I guess I gotta add fee, to fund road maintenance for a limited time? That's 19 words.
That's not bad.
That's, I like that.
The only thing is, I see is that it, and again, my inclination is to go with the question of a vehicle registration fee. However, I think we can gather a lot by polling. So if we had something like, shall the county pursue a voter-approved fee for a limited number of years to pay for deferred road maintenance? Now, we haven't said what fee that is this way, and we can use the polling, which we've done already, and which, of course, there is already money in the budget to do, to really find out, to really boil down, because we heard on the testimony part, some people like gas tax, some people like vehicle registration fee, some people don't like a darn thing.
So to respond on that, you know, I actually agree with Mr. Shop, Sharp, Shop, yeah, about that, because we're, we're asking less if you don't say what it is we're asking for. And you gotta be a little more specific. But I will support whatever this board wants to come up with.
Let's see what Commissioner Savis has to say.
Well, as I was speaking earlier, and since, I think it was January 19th, we've been talking about this, I've been pretty firm and clear that, that we gotta, number one, educate with this advisory vote. Number two, clarify a commitment to putting it on the ballot, because at that meeting, there was discussion about not putting it on the ballot. I had problems with that. And I think politically, concerns about, that I've already heard since Tuesday, was, you're taking the voter-approved piece back in, so it sounds like we're going back to that, which is good. So I think for the moment, let's build on that. We had a lot of discussion about whether we should put a specific mechanism in there, whether it be a fee or a gas tax. And that was a straw poll that we'd had at C4, Chair, as you pointed out. But we've also made a commitment that we're going to do more outreach, and make sure that we weigh and factor in what we hear from the citizens from here till September, and not predetermine something. And though we express that we're leaning perhaps towards a vehicle registration fee of a certain amount, you know, I support that leaning, but I think, you know, to be genuine to everything we've said so far, to the folks we've said, is that we're going to listen to everyone following this vote, and even, well, actually, from this point forward, as we do our outreach, to get better, a better sense of where people, what mechanism people ought to do, ought to support, or we ought to put on the ballot in November. And I think that's really important, and one, to make sure that their time spent, our outreach spent, is meaningful. If we predetermine that we're going to do something, I think we take the meaningfulness out of their participation from here forward. So I could work, I could read, I'll read again, there's another couple ways of doing it, that's why I handed it to Mr. Story. It could read, shall the county pursue voter-approved funding for a limited number of years, comma, for deferred road maintenance, versus what I wrote down and passed before you, which is, shall the county pursue voter-approved funding for deferred road maintenance, comma, for a limited number of years? But Chris, I don't know, from a wordsmithing standpoint, the sequence of the limited number of years, either before or after the deferred road maintenance, your opinion?
If I were to make a recommendation, I would suggest the latter. It seems a little bit clearer to voters that the limited number of years applies to the funding and not to the maintenance.
Okay. That's what I was thinking.
Latter of what?
Well, if, taking this, inserting it there.
Yeah. So contrary to what I put before you, because I just threw this together before the meeting, it would read again, if I heard Mr. Story correctly, shall the county pursue voter-approved funding for a limited number of years, comma, for deferred road maintenance? Very clear, very comprehensive.
And again, the part I like about it is, it's non-committal to some degree. We should gather up, and I fully support our cities, but the people get to vote on this, both in cities and outside of cities. So we really do need to poll them and find out what people think about, should it be a vehicle registration fee? Should it be gas tax? And frankly, I'm not willing in November to go out for two things. We're going to have to decide on one here. But I think this would allow this alteration, and I had an arrow moving that, thank you for moving that, Commissioner Savis. But let's talk about that. Jim, you know what it says now? There's an arrow over for that? You will see it? Let's see. And I had, shall the county pursue a voter-approved fee for a limited number of years to pay for deferred road maintenance? It reads the same, in essence, so I'm fine with this particular change. Commissioner Savis, why don't you make a motion to that effect?
Chair, I move that we change the ballot title, or the language that's in the board packet, today's packet, to read, shall the county pursue voter-approved funding for a limited number of years, comma, for deferred road maintenance?
Is there a second?
Second.
All right.
Sorry.
Motion by Commissioner Savis, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Further discussion? Commissioner Bernard?
So first, I don't think we should go to the ballot to educate people. I mean, it is one of the tools, and something that, you know, I guess, it's certainly an option. I think that because we have county, because we have city support on a vehicle registration fee, it seems to me that that question doesn't give them anything to get behind. So I think, I think that's a challenge. And identifying specifically what we're talking about, you know, it means that we're not talking about gas tax, it means that we're not talking about a utility fee, it means that we're talking about vehicle registration fee. So it's much more specific. So just for the heck of it, I'm going to throw mine in here, just for discussion. Shall the county pursue for a limited time to increase vehicle "Shall the county pursue for a limited time to increase vehicle registration fee, keep friggin' fee, to fund road maintenance?"
I can't support that, because it doesn't have voter-approved in there.
Yeah, it does.
Say it again, Jim.
Oh, I actually did take that out, didn't I? "Shall the county pursue voter approval for a limited time to increase vehicle registration fee to fund road maintenance?"
Well, the problem is, it, it, let me read it. Can I read it?
Well, I dropped, I gotta rewrite it. I just wanna get voter approval. "Shall the county approve, pursue voter..."
Voter-approved. "Shall the county pursue a voter-approved for a limited time?" I don't understand that part of it.
Well, I dropped out the voter-approved when I was writing it, so that doesn't, I'll work on it. But let's go ahead and keep talking. I'll play with it a little bit.
Well, I don't know how much talking we're gonna do about this.
So, I, I just think we should identify specifically what the mechanism is. That's all.
So, do you, I mean, we have, Jim, we have beat this thing up.
Well, we can put it in the explanatory statement, too.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess just so that's in there, I'm, I'm okay.
The, the thing I'm trying to get away from is making a commitment as to what we propose to people in November, because through our polling, we may find out that there's a groundswell of individuals who prefer a gas tax to a vehicle registration fee. Now, again, I'm inclined to follow the cities' lead, because they want some piece of the pie here, and I think, I think that's certainly understandable. But if people are so against a vehicle registration fee, and you heard several people talk about that last Thursday, maybe a gas tax is, is the way to go. But you're, you're trying to get the VHF, vehicle registration fee, back in there, right?
Yeah, I mean, in the explanatory statement, it actually doesn't really identify alternative options. Gas tax, I mean, if you're gonna do that, advisory measure is designed to help the county gauge the level voter interest in vehicle registration fee, comma, gas tax, comma, except that in that vote, they're not identifying the, you know, the level of interest. And that's why I'm suggesting you have to identify something specifically. Because even, even this, they're just saying, yes, we should pursue something, but they're not telling us what it is we should pursue.
Yeah.
That's, that's where I have.
Commissioner Savis?
Well, again, I just wanna restate the purpose, I think, of not identifying a specific mechanism, and also add some insight to the C4 thinking years back, when C4 was deeply involved with this. But I'll start with, I think it's important, we have a public engagement process from here forward. We're making a heck of a commitment. We're gonna do a lot of outreach. And what I've learned from public involvement over the years is, and I've heard this actually from a lot of people, a lot of different people, from a lot of different special interests, why are you inviting me if you already made, made, already decided what you're gonna do? You know, so if we're gonna ask people what they think, what's, what's left to think? What's left for them to input on? So, I believe in genuine, if you're gonna bring some people out, talk about it, engage them, bring some, a genuine, I mean, once we establish this, the discussion can be focused on those two mechanisms. We, and I'm, I'm expecting a positive result, based on the statement that we've, that's on the floor, by the way, which is the motion and a second, that's still on the floor here. But, so with that said, again, I wanna reemphasize that. With that said, is that it's not out of the question, because C4 was talking about, perhaps at some point in time, maybe, you know, you do one, gain the trust, and go out for another funding mechanism, and you can still do revenue sharing with another fee. You can do, get revenue sharing with gas tax, if you make a commitment and an IGA to do revenue sharing. So, the revenue sharing and appealing to the cities or others is not out of, out of the question on any fee. So, that, it's not just limited to VRF. So, and because most of our pollings come back and said that most people favor the gas tax, actually, you know, granted, it's close, but every survey's come back and said that the voters, the public, are leaning towards a gas tax, I'm reluctant to make a commitment and to that specifically, especially with the climate right now of falling gas prices. So, I think we need to hear the folks out completely, and, and we've got several months here to do that. So, I would like to see us move forward, at least on this question, and we can talk about, we can put in the ballot language after this motion is determined.
Barbara? If we, if we did not impose, through voter approval, a vehicle registration fee, and we wanted to attain our, let's call it a five-million-dollar goal to us, what kind of gas tax would that be if we shared forty percent with the cities? Which we're not required to do by law. I'll let you look that up, and Commissioner Bernard, hey, look that up, and Commissioner Bernard wants to say.
Some cities don't have gas stations. So, this, with the question alone, if you vote yes, meaning, yes, we should put it on the ballot, if you vote no, it seems, you know, the, I think the question is, if you vote no, then we can do it without putting it on the ballot.
Ain't gonna happen.
But I think that's what this leaves it open to that.
If they vote no, then we'll see you next year, because we're not gonna do anything this year, you know? That's, there's always that chance, Jim, that they'll vote no on this, and, but I like the voter-approved part in there. But I, I have no problem with this, except for, it gives us the opportunity to weigh out what is best according to the, to the voter.
I'm gonna support the majority of the commission on this. I think if we've decided to use this as an educational tool, even though I do not agree with that, the rest of the commission thinks it's a valuable tool, and they want to, I mean, I don't have a problem with the words, I just don't know that it answers the question of what we're considering. But, you know, that would work out over time. Before November, we might be able to figure that out. You know, I think politically, it's not a, it's not a political, you know, something that we could use against one another, because we're all interested in road maintenance. So, I don't think it creates that. So, I guess for me, you know, I'm gonna support what, with those caveats, that I have some concerns.
Well, I just wanna ask you, how do you figure that we're trying to educate the voters with this simple question?
Well, that's, it's the rest.
Oh.
It's the rest of this stuff.
Oh, yeah, which, Tudy's got a couple problems that we'll go over.
I don't, yeah, the question itself, I mean, if, if it's, if, if we can educate them in twenty words, congratulations.
Legal counsel, Mr. Story.
I was just gonna note that everybody, Director Cartmill's ready to answer your question.
I did. I found the gas tax amount. So, a six-cent county-wide gas tax would generate the five million, the similar amount to the VRF you've been talking about. It's five million, a little over five million to the county, a little over three million to the cities.
How many cents?
Six.
Six cents, which is pretty big stuff. And that's, that's our concern, and we've talked about this, is that, and you know, I, I know how C4 feels that anything we do, they should get a forty percent. But as was mentioned by Commissioner Savis, if we shared that, that'd be a pretty hefty request to send out to voters, even though gas, gas prices are fairly low. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, well, I, I don't think, yeah, I don't wanna get into the weeds, and we're kind of there, but I won't get into, there's actually greater detail as to what the proposal was from the cities, we were talking about at the time, and it was not as, you know, I'm trying to keep it simple here, as far as that opening the door, that we can use another mechanism like gas tax to do revenue sharing. The proposal was a little bit more complex, and actually, it also built capital for transportation improvements like Congestion I-205, Matching Funds, Sunrise, or other major highway projects where everyone benefits. So, we wanted to have an ability to capture some of the federal and state grants with the Matching Funds mechanism. And this proposal, which we can go into detail at another meeting, I can add some insight in that. And that's, I think, something we talk about between now and September. When do we do for the, to make a decision for the November ballot, September?
September.
Yeah. So, we have until that time to hammer out all these details. And I'm glad, it sounds like Commissioner Bernard's gonna support the motion for this, and then we can move on and talk about the ballot language. So, let's, if we could, let's, I'd like to see us move there. And, but I just wanna, I think it's important to gain the public trust. And Jim, I think your point about what people might read into a yes or a no vote, I would also say that, you know, factor in the last few words, or, excuse me, the, the words thereof, not the last few words, but, "Shall the county pursue voter-approved funding for a limited number of years." So, that's a sunset, essentially. So, you could say, or determine out of that, that either they do or don't support a limited number of years, or they do or don't support voter-approved funding. But I don't think we need to spend a lot of time about trying to read too much into what that message is, especially if it comes out positive.
So, I don't, yeah?
Go ahead.
I, I, I don't think it's us I'm worried about, but a lot of other people might read a lot into that.
For sure. All right. Are we ready for the question now? It now reads, "Shall the county pursue voter-approved funding for a limited amount of years, comma, for deferred road maintenance?" Is there enough commas in there, Mr. Story?
It's all good. You have seventeen words in that question.
Didn't ask about the words, I asked about the commas.
Commas are good.
Oh, okay.
Now, you, you said amount, I said number. Does it matter? I don't, I'm not gonna.
Oh, did I say?
Yeah, you said amount, limited amount, and I said limited number.
You changed it to number, didn't you?
Yep.
All right, so.
Read it back.
One more time. "Shall the county pursue voter-approved funding for a limited number of years, comma, for deferred road maintenance?" Do I have it right now?
Yes.
All right. Kevin?
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
That's drama. Love that delay.
Chair, love that.
Aye, passes four zero. Now, give the floor to Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. I have two, maybe three, things that I would like to discuss with staff. Under the bold title of explanatory statement, explanatory statement, second paragraph that starts with the words, "The results", and it reads as follows, "The results of this measure will be informative for the county, but will not result in either requiring or precluding any future action of the county, by the county." Can you explain to me what that means?
We're clarifying what advisory vote means for the folks when they're voting.
And that is?
That it is not binding, so it will not either require the county to take action or preclude the county from taking action.
Okay. I think that is worthy of further explanation as we go forward, because, as you remember Mr. LeBlanc's testimony last Thursday night, he raised that very question. Maybe not as delicate as we would like it to seem, but I understand why this is, kinda protects the Board of County Commissioners, in a way, from taking any further action.
Tudy, if we removed the word either, and the words or precluding, then it would read, "The results of this measure will be informative to the county, but will not result in requiring any future action by the county." So, you struck either, you struck or precluding, and, and that's, that's truthful, isn't it?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that reads better.
"The results of this measure will be informative for the county, but will not result in requiring any future action by the county." You got that, Mr. Story?
I do.
Does that solve what, what you wanted to do in this statement?
Well, it solves what you wanna do in the statement, I think.
Yeah, okay.
You're the driver.
All right. Well, that, that works for me. Now?
Do we have a consensus on that? Yes? Okay, Tudy?
The purpose, just for clarification, Chair, just responding to your, your query, the purpose of that is just for clarifying, simplifying?
Well, no, the purpose of this is, Commissioner Smith.
Your change, no, your, no, your change.
Well, the change is to keep the sentence in there.
And simplify.
And eliminate anything that seems like we're gonna take action without consent of the voter.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, Tudy?
Okay. The next page, the very top paragraph, that starts with registration title fees, VRF, said, "Last sentence that says consequently, 'It is not possible to reallocate funds intended for other services or programs to finance road maintenance.'" Well, I first read that, and automatically, what came to my mind is state law forbids using ad valorem property taxes for roads. Well, that's stated in the second paragraph under summary. So, this refers to what, Mr. Story?
Well, my understanding is the previous sentence. It says, "Similar restrictions apply to other sources of funds the county receives." To distinguish the fact that the county receives property taxes, but they also receive revenue from multiple other sources. We get building permit fees or, or other types of revenue, H3S grants. None of those sources of funds are available to be expended in, for road funding.
Well, how would it read if we just took out that sentence? Would it hurt anything?
The last sentence, I think.
Wouldn't bother me?
Because I don't think it's clear.
It's certainly possible, but it might not be legal.
Paul?
Yeah, I, I agree, because actually, that's a very complicated, I mean, my response to that would be, and me and John would be arm-wrestling over this, once again. But I, I would support striking that if, if it's not necessary, because it's actually the, I, it leads one to believe in certain topics, like ad valorem, because there are legal mechanisms to do, to do that, to, with, that are limited, which we're currently doing, and I don't wanna lose that mechanism. So, I, I would be okay with striking the, the sentence that reads, "Consequently, it is not possible to reallocate funds intended for other services or programs to finance road maintenance."
Jim, you okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, that is struck. Tudy, go ahead.
Okay, the, the title, the, going back to the front again, the ballot language title, and it says, "Advisory vote on pursuing a public funding, funding of county road maintenance." So, what does public funding mean? Shouldn't that say something like?
Additional?
Voter, citizen-paid funding? Because you think of public funding, to me, comes to mind the state, or the feds, or some other type of public funding. This doesn't say that you folks will be paying for it, in the, in the title. Does that make sense?
Yeah, should it read user funding, like road user, or something?
Or it should be citizen-paid funding, or something like that. Public funding doesn't tell me anything. It's a very, public is very, public is used interchangeably with government, private citizens, nonprofits, blah, 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 blah.
I, I take your point. It's very well taken. I'll just note that there, the word limit for the title is.
And how many words?
Is ten words, and we're at ten. So, if you wish to take out the word public, we need to substitute it with a single word, or else rework that to.
How about voter-funded? Instead of public funding, voter-funded.
And voter-funded?
Well, I, I think technically, whether you vote for it or not, you're gonna fund it.
Well, the thing, this is the deal. Sometimes people only read the title question, and maybe one, I mean, they may only read two. And I wanna be really clear what we're asking. We're asking you folks to pay for it. And I think voter-funded, this is how it would read, "Advisory vote on pursuing voter-funded county road maintenance."
Well, actually, it would read correctly, technically, it was voter-approved funding, because it's not only the voters that will pay for it. That's my point. So, let's say it passes, and fifty-one percent of the people support it, the forty-nine percent that didn't support are still gonna pay for it.
Actually, Paul, that wouldn't be too bad. Advisory vote on pursuing voter-funded?
Voter-approved.
Voter-approved funding of county road maintenance.
We could take out the word of.
We up to ten?
We were, the, the last phrase was eleven words, so we.
We could take out the word of, if it was, see, that, a voter-approved funding, now I guess it wouldn't work. Well, is there another word for public?
Added.
Actually, I thought user, when you said that, probably accurately characterized what we were talking about, vehicle registration fee and gas tax. Both reflect users of the system.
So, what's the sentence?
So, tell us a sentence, Mr. Story.
You, I would, if you were to use that word, it would say, "Advisory vote on pursuing user funding of county road maintenance." You would substitute the word user for public.
Yeah, I don't know about that either.
Barb, what have you?
Barbara, you got something? Sure. Everybody's in here.
So, I was working on eliminating the word, word "pursuing", and possibly something along the lines of advisory vote on new or additional public funding, so they know that it's new or additional to what is being paid for now.
Yeah, see, I was gonna say, "Advisory vote on pursuing additional funding of county road maintenance."
Is that ten, Jim?
Yeah, I took the word public out, put additional.
Read that again.
Advisory. Advisory vote on pursuing additional funding for road, uh, county road maintenance. So I just took the word public out.
Is that ten, did you count?
Well, if this was ten, I took out one, added one, it is exactly ten.
You did math.
I did, I, yes, I'm a mathematician.
I have another. How about if we say advisory vote on pursuing county fund, funding of road maintenance, county instead of public? That doesn't make sense. That, that seems that...
Well, they already have...
I'm one of those in writing guys, if I'm staring at it, I can understand it a lot better.
So here, here's a simple one, that's still ten words, I think. Advisory vote on voter approved funding of county road maintenance. You just sub- substitute pursuing in public, strike pursuing in public and put voter approved. You got ten words.
All right. I wish people would write it down, pass it around. I'm a visual kinda guy.
So strike, just strike pursuing in public and substitute voter approved.
Advisory vote on voter approved funding, hmm, that's kinda like what you said, Jim, in some ways. Okay, so voter approved. All right, Jim, read yours again, please.
Mine was advisory vote on pursuing additional funding for county road maintenance.
That's not bad either. All right, we have to decide on one, it's ten words.
Let's raise your hand if you support.
Yeah, yeah, here, let me read Commissioner Savis', we'll get a vote here. Advisory vote on voter approved funding of county road maintenance. No hands, all right. Jim, read yours.
Advisory vote on pursuing additional funding for county road maintenance.
You guys, on one hand you raise your hands, and you all freeze when I ask the second time.
Chair, I, I've got it.
All right, Commissioner Savis?
I, I think, uh, not because I'm in love with my own words here, but I think that the language I, I, um, s- I'm suggesting is quite consistent with the language of the ballot title that we just approved.
I think you should make a motion.
So I move to change the title to advisory vote on voter approved funding of county road maintenance.
Second.
All right, Commissioner Savis with the motion, Commissioner Bernard with the second, further discussion. Don't you love doing stuff by committee? Actually, it's turned out okay. We do this often. All right, any further discussion on this particular change? All right, Kevin?
Okay, Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Chair Ludo?
Aye, passes four zero. So, Commissioner, are you done with the explanatory statement, the summary, the question, the title, all of it?
Yep.
All right, so now, legal counsel wants to say something.
One note on the explanatory statement, the first sentence of it presupposed the, uh, original ballot question, which said that the advisory measure is designed to help the county gauge level of voter interest in the idea of a vehicle registration fee alone. It was specific to it as the question was specific...
And so, comma, gas tax, comma, utility fee.
Or other user fee.
Or other user fees.
Yeah, add that.
I wanted to note that we would have to clarify that, okay?
So we could put a comma in there and, uh, or, a vehicle registration fee or a gas tax?
I'd say and?
Well, yeah, the, the, the way, uh, it could read would be, "The county gauge the level of voter interest in the idea of a vehicle registration fee, comma, gas tax, comma, or other user fee."
Sure.
Sure.
That's agreed upon.
Yep.
All right, I need a motion, and be sure to add the as amended, please.
So moved.
There's script there, there's the script there, we've already settled all that.
I move we approve the board order to refer an advisory measure to the voters in May twenty sixteen to pursue public funding of county road maintenance, as amended.
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Bernard, second by Commissioner Smith. So the amendments include that which Mr. Story was just talking about, and the three other areas I think that we changed. All right?
Please read that back to us, the entire thing.
Yeah.
I do have it written down.
Are we ready for the question?
All right, Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludo?
Aye, passes four zero. And now, thank you.
Thank you.
And now, I'll announce the board will adjourn as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Service District Number Five Board for the next public hearings.
So, uh, Mr. Chair, what we have are, uh, six hearings for six assessment areas, uh, to be formed, uh, relating to the Clackamas Service District Number Five, which is our street lighting service district, and I'm gonna ask Wendy Coriel, who is the manager of our street lighting service district, to give a report, uh, that will summarize each of these.
Okay.
I'm Wendy Coriel, representing Clackamas County Service District Number Five for street lighting in the unincorporated areas of Clackamas County and for the cities of Happy Valley and Damascus. Street lighting is required as conditions of approval for all new residential, multifamily, commercial, and industrial developments in the urban area of Clackamas County and the cities of Happy Valley and Damascus. Street lighting can also be installed through the district's petitioning process. Um, today, there are six items before you, um, for consideration, and five are in the unincorporated areas of Clackamas County, and one is in the city of Happy Valley. The first item for your consideration is a forty-two lot subdivision, which is Area Zero One One Five, is on southeast one hundred and seventy-second Avenue. Um, we'll do, be doing a mixed use of Westbrook-style lights and Cobra poles, um, and Cobra with fiberglass poles. This will come under a rate W at two hundred and fifty dollars per tax lot each year. Next area for your consideration is a, is Area Thirty-three dash one five, is a three lot partition on southeast Eckler Avenue, and this will have Cobra lights on fiberglass poles, and these will come under rate C at seventy-one dollars and fifty-five cents per tax lot each year. Um, the next area for your consideration is Fifty-eight dash one five, which is Precision Axle Building Edition, and this is on southeast Piazza Avenue. We'll install Cobra lights on fiberglass poles, and this will come under rate D at a dollar twenty-eight per frontage foot per tax lot each year. Next item for your consideration is Sixty-five dash one five, this is a Schweitzer three lot pu- partition on southeast Courtney Avenue. We'll be installing Cobra lights on the existing wood poles, and this will come to rate B at fifty-one dollars and three cents per tax lot each year. The fifth item for your consideration is Fifty-five dash one five, this is Coachman Auto Body, and this is one that will use Cobra lights on wood poles, and this is in, uh, the Tolbert Street area, and this will come at a rate D at a dollar twenty-eight per frontage foot per tax lot each year. And the last area is Area Zero Seven dash one three, which is Holly Farm Retail Building, and we'll use Cobra lights on aluminum poles, and this will come at a rate D at a dollar twenty-eight per frontage foot per tax lot each year. And there were no remonstrances received on any of these areas, and that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions about these? All right, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak. Close the public hearing, and ask for the motion.
I move we approve the, oops, yeah, we approve the board order for the six assessment areas within Clackamas County Service District Number Five, as presented today so artfully.
Is there a second to artfully?
I'll artfully second.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard with the motion, Commissioner Smith with the second.
You don't have to add art.
Further discussion, no, then we're not gonna. All right, Kevin?
All right, Commissioner Savis?
Artfully, aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Chair Ludo?
Aye, passes four zero. I'll announce the board will adjourn as the Service District Number Five, and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. And now it's time for the consent agenda. Um, first of all, we really do have to wish Kevin a happy birthday, so on three, we say happy birthday, Kevin. Ready? Well, you wanna sing it? Dawn wants to lead the singing, go ahead.
We're not gonna throw Tudy and Jim in this?
Well, it, tell us your birthday.
We'll do that next week.
Tell us your...
March third.
March third, and tell us your...
March first.
March first?
Yeah.
Wow, okay, so I don't know how we stuff all those names in there, but we probably should.
Kevin, Tudy, Jim.
Kevin, Tudy, Jim. Kevin, Tudy, Jim, all ready? Go ahead, Ms. Crup.
All right. Happy birthday to you!
And all other citizens having their birthday.
Happy birthday to you!
And all other citizens having their birthday.
Happy birthday, Kevin, Tudy and Jim.
All other citizens having their birthday.
Happy birthday to you! Yay! All right, happy birthday. Kevin, now which one's the youngest? Oh, that's right. Okay, and now, Mr. Moss, please read the consent agenda by title.
All right, under Health, Housing and Human Services, Approval of a Subrecipient Agreement with North Clackamas Education Foundation for Teen Mentor Program at Lot Whitcomb and Milwaukee Elementary. Under Department of Transportation and Development, a resolution initiating, initiating a local improvement district for street and storm drainage improvements on Starview Lane. Approval to purchase two one-one-four S.D. Freightliner dump trucks from McCoy Freightliner for the Department of Transportation and Development. Under our Finance Department, Approval of a Contract with Mag LLC for Improvements to the Clackamas County Parking Lot at Eleventh and Main Street in Oregon City. Under Elected Officials, Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes. Under our Juvenile Department, Approval to Apply for the Mentoring for Child Victims of Commercial Sexual Exploitation and Domestic Sex Trafficking Initiative Grant. Under Business and Community Services, Approval of a Memorandum of Understanding between Boring Damascus Grange Number Two Sixty and Clackamas County Parks for the Purchase and Installation of Playground Equipment at the Boring Station Trailhead Park. Approval of Title Two Domestic Grant between Clackamas County Parks and Forest and the U.S., United States Department of Agriculture Forest Service Mount Hood National Forest for the Dump Stoppers Program. Uh, this item G, County Administration, was added to the agenda. It's Approval of a Partnership Memorandum of Understanding for the Department of Justice Office of Violence Against Women Grant to Encourage Arrest and Enforcement of the Protection Orders Program for the Family Justice Center. Under North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, a Board Order Authorizing North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District to Apply for the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Program for Wichita Park. A Board Order Authorizing North Clackamas Parks and Recreation, Recreation District to Apply for Oregon Parks and Recreation Department Local Government Grant Program for Hidden Falls. And a Board Order Authorizing North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District to Apply for an Oregon Parks and Recreation Department Local Government Grant Program for North Clackamas Park, and that concludes our consent agenda.
All right, Commissioners, want to pull any of these items?
Well, I'm concerned, and I don't know where Hidden Falls is.
I've never heard of Hidden Falls.
I know where it is, it's up on Mount Scott, right?
Happy Valley.
Yeah, it's, uh, anyway, I was gonna pull all of Gary's, 'cause he was here, but I think I'll leave him in there. So I move we approve a board, oops, I move we approve the consent agenda, including item G one.
I, uh, second.
All right, Commissioner Bernard with the motion, Commissioner Smith with the second, yes, thanks for delineating the G one, was a late addition, and not online, or it may be online by now, but it was a late addition. And, um, I wanna say that three plus years ago, when I came into office, one of the things that was needed, uh, was determined was additional parking for a, a facility of parole officers we have down on Main Street, three years ago. And so I brought to the board the idea of buying a parking lot that was adjacent to that. Three years has taken, and we're still, the parking lot's not even really started, three years. Now, one would think that, my golly, it's the county staff falling down their job, but it's not the case here, because we have to get permits through Oregon City. In addition to Oregon City, has been our, our neighbor, um, to the east, and that is the railroad. And, um, if you've never worked with a railroad before, they are ploddingly slow. And so we were able to purchase that parking lot to really alleviate some problems we had with an arbitration, in which the parole officers, who are usually in a big hurry, don't have any place to park, so they had to park too far away, and it's just, uh, too much of a hassle getting back to their cars and not having them ticketed, because Oregon City allows two-hour parking only, and then you must move your car to another location, you can't plug the meter again, though you're gonna get a ticket. So this has been a real struggle for three years, um, hoping that, that somehow we might get done with that parking lot this year, but, anyway, that's on the consent agenda, it's glad to see some kind of, uh, forward, um, progress. All right, any, oh, oh, Mr. Crup, yes?
Well, I was just going to say, I am of the understanding that the, upon approval of the contract, the contractor is really ready to get mobilized and get started within the next couple of days.
Oh, my gosh.
Wow.
That is great news. Uh, one of the things I also engineered was that there's a building to the north, uh, adjacent to this property, and I talked to the owner about, uh, Oregon City High School Arts Department doing a mural on that wall, and they agreed. So I think that's gonna be a great addition down there, gives some kinda scenic student view on that wall, but I think it'll be a great project. Are we ready for the question?
Yep.
All right, Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ludo?
Aye, passes five zero. And now, it's time for County Commissioner, or excuse me, County Administrator update.
Oh, geez, I got a promotion. Uh, well, yeah, I've got a couple of items, uh, Commissioners. Uh, one is, is that last week, our, uh, Transportation and Development Department hosted a successful open house for the Monroe Neighborhood Street Design Plan. We had some seventy people show up at Whitcomb Elementary School near Milwaukee to learn about this project that's going to be improving safety and accessibility for drivers, pedestrians, and cyclists, and others, uh, on Monroe Street and Thompson Road. I got a nice note from Tammy G., who was one of the attendees, she left a rather lengthy, uh, communication with us, but she did say, "I am really happy to see Clackamas County taking the issue of walking and bike safety seriously. I wanna be able to move around my community on foot and by bike safely. I am a homeowner and willing to pay for this and similar projects, whether through a bond, property tax, gas tax, utility fee, or other funding measure. I drive, I bike, I walk, I value improvements like this." So, nice, nice comments.
We wanna clone her.
Yes, yeah, yeah, we'll do that. So I wanna thank her for her comments, and also thank, uh, the Department of Transportation and Development for putting on what was a very successful event. Residents can still, uh, provide feedback online if they, uh, co- connect up on, uh, our website, on the front page, there's a link there at www.clackamas.us. We're taking comments through March the sixth, uh, from the public on this project, so looking forward to that. The second item I wanted to share with you was, um, an item relating to our Juvenile Department. We wanted to give a special acknowledgement to a, uh, youth from Canby, uh, I will not name that person, but, uh, this, this individual, uh, recently graduated from high school. Now, that might not seem especially noteworthy, but this particular youth had not been to school for two years. Uh, and with support and encouragement of his county juvenile court counselor and other partners, uh, he was able to connect up with a community tutor, uh, and to receive help to prepare and to pass exams. This individual said there was a time when, uh, he thought that college wasn't an option, but today, um, this, this individual is now enrolled and ready to start as a freshman at Clackamas Community College, right here in Oregon City. So I wanted to express the congratulations to this, uh, young individual, uh, and also to thank our Juvenile Department for the remarkable work they do at empowering at-risk youth. And that's my report.
Thank you. Now it's time for Commissioners' communication, we'll start with Commissioner Savis.
Okay, well, we had a quite a, quite a meeting here last Thursday, we didn't have a lot of opportunity to, um, it was pretty late, so we all, we kinda waived our opportunity to speak that evening, uh, so we'd go to him, get home at a recent, uh, hour. But, you know, but discussions we had Thursday, and we even had this Tuesday, um, there's just a lot of principles that, um, of, are of value and of such value, and I applaud my Commissioners for supporting that one goal specifically about restoring the public's trust. And, um, that's always, that's always something that we need to be, um, consistent with and, and not ever forget. And, um, you know, based on Tuesday, and even our, our work today, as far as, um, the road funding issues, doing things I think as consistently as possible. consistently as possible. And what I'm really leading to, to some degrees, are the value and the purpose and the sanctity of special districts, our service districts, you know, and I know we've had, you know, concerns and pressures and interest from a number of folks, and in particular, our cities, and I value our relationship with our cities. But I think it's also important that, as districts, we have a responsibility to the ratepayers, to the taxpayers that are part of that district. And we must kind of look at where we've been and where we ought to be, and involving the public more as, as we should, as we do in other districts where they're highly successful by having input from the citizens and the people that they serve, and not giving exclusive access to the cities, but sharing that access with everyone. And I think that's a recipe for success by including everyone. That includes businesses, ratepayers, that may not be residents, but may also be ratepayers within the districts. So going into future discussions, Monday, Tuesday, as we do, whether it's the North Clacks County Parks and Recreation District, whether it's the Library District, whether it is CCSD-1, our wastewater district, or Tri-Cities, that we keep that in mind, that having a valuable, meaningful citizen input on those is, again, I believe, a recipe for restoring trust and success in our endeavors in the future in order to save them monies and bringing value to the service at the most responsible price possible. And I think those are, those are just fundamental to me, and I will fight and advocate for that from here on out, especially as we move forward with discussions with the cities in all three of these categories, or districts, it is. Thank you.
All right, and Commissioner Bernard?
We did have a great discussion on many issues last week, and I think we, we did some great work and moved forward. The library issue is, is one of the more challenging one, and I just want to make sure that in the future, you know, somehow that be part of our psyche, something we always look and to and manage, because it's kind of challenging when you have seventy advisory committees, plus or minus, that you have to watch over them all. Also look forward to, you know, starting to work to rebuild public trust in the villages at Mount Hood, and provide adequate training, and then be there to make sure that that process moves forward. You know, I thought that that was a very challenging issue. We made the right decision, and we've gotten various emails, some very supportive and some not, and, but, you know, we followed the rules and did it the right way. And I still think, though, that when we look at the bylaws, maybe for future villages or hamlets, that we have a tool, a mechanism, when things go sideways, to take action without making it political, as this turns out to be. Other than that, busy week. I look forward to some sunshine. My brother's coming in from Nantucket, and I look forward to seeing him. I haven't seen him in, rarely see him, so it's great. We're going to go crabbing. Hopefully the crabbing's good.
Yeah.
So, also, we have a dog that I want to talk about. This is Andora. She's a working dog that is known for guarding and protecting the flock. I know where she barks a lot.
Don't say that.
She would love to have a job with you, at least at minimum wage. That will keep her mind and body busy. Regular brushing will keep her thick coat looking lovely. A fenced yard with a room to roam, with room to roam, and lots of exercise will keep her happy and healthy. Please go and visit Andora today. For more information about Andora and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County's Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or visit them on the web at www.clackamas.us/dogs. That's D-O-G-S.
Dog is backwards from God.
Yes.
Yes.
You throw the S on there.
It's the gods.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The last two weeks have just been hugely busy. You'll hear that from all the Commissioners. Not only are we doing our jobs here at the county, but the legislature's in session. And I spent a good, a whole day this week down, meeting with legislators about funding for Lamont Falls locks for a disposition study. And we're asking for $750,000, and keeping our fingers crossed that we might actually get $500,000 of that. And so that'd be quite generous from the legislature, and that's looking very good. Thank you. And within that scope, this Saturday, Senator Merkley and his staff is coming to tour the Lamont Falls, the Lamont Falls. I will be with him, hosting and speaking, and it's a very, going to be a very fun opportunity for him to see. In Congress, he has been a big supporter of this project, of the falls and the locks as well. Last Saturday night, I attended the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce Auction and Fundraiser Dinner, and it was a hoot and a lot of fun, because they had theme of traveling around the world, and people were dressed up, and we had a good speaker and good food, sampling of different foods from different countries. And then to finish it off, this Saturday night, we are all invited. I'll be attending the Canby Chamber of Commerce Dinner, their annual dinner, and over at Canby at the Golf Club, to help out their efforts and just say thank you for the chamber and all they do over there. And that's all I have.
Thank you. I chaired the Safe Place Steering Committee meeting the other day. You know, it's, it's great to see the passion, enthusiasm that our employees who work there have for doing this fantastic job to help out vulnerable and abused women in a lot of cases. Went to the Economic Development Commission meeting, and also yesterday, a regional mayors and chairs meeting. This is where the three chairs from Tri-County area and all the regional mayors get together around a table with President Hughes of the council, Metro Council. And, you know, the North Clackamas Chamber of Commerce and their endorsement process this last week decided to really take a pot shot at every sitting Commissioner in a lot of ways. And one of the things they, they dissed me about was poking the eye of Metro. Well, I wasn't the only one around this table poking the eye of Metro, believe me. So if that's a fault, then there's a lot of mayors who are guilty that day as well. President Hughes wants to form a fifteen-person committee, subcommittee, to talk about the UGB expansion, which he says is coming in three years. But it also brought up was something this commission backed, and that was sub-regional analysis or sub-regional zoning, in a sense, to look at a smaller unit to decide whether they need some expansion regardless of what happens in Forest Grove in this particular case. Here we're in Clackamas County. I personally don't care. There's industrial property in Forest Grove that's available to, to expand upon. It doesn't affect positively those who live in Clackamas County. So anyway, it was great to see other people poking the eye of Metro. Today, I'll be going down to Salem to meet at ODOT with city representatives from Newburgh, from Wilsonville, county representatives from Yamhill, and myself and one of our engineers to talk about the bypass that is occurring in Dundee around Newburgh and how that affects Wilsonville Road. This has been ongoing, as Commissioners know, for many, many months. I'll be glad when it gets over. Last Saturday, because honoring heroes of Salem lost their auctioneer, suddenly, they put on Facebook that they needed an auctioneer, and they had twenty, twenty-plus years in doing that. So was able to go down for honoring heroes and do the auction, and we raised thousands of dollars for our honored vets. But that was great fun. I certainly appreciate the generosity of those who were bidding that day. We made a decision this week that I think everybody can certainly look up, and it's been in the media. We have decided that Gladstone will not get the additional monies we currently hold until they get around a table and discuss what they're doing. And I'm not saying they have to get that approval of, but they certainly have to discuss what they're doing with the seventy percent of the people that will be using their library. That is the unincorporated portion of Clackamas County between Milwaukee and Gladstone. It's a tough decision to make, but we're resolute about it, and I hope that cooler parties prevail, and they all get around a table and decide that this is a good place for them to have a library, that being on Portland Avenue in Gladstone. Now, I've said it before, I want to emphasize this. You know, you look at Oregon City, just take Oregon City, who serves, I think, fifty-seven thousand patrons, and the city's not that big, but they certainly pick up a lot of area, and that includes all the way out to Malino. So you think if somebody wants to enjoy library services, they have to drive. Now, let's remember that, that even though the Gladstone Library serves the unincorporated, the unincorporated people can go to any library in Clackamas County. In fact, actually, they can go to any library in, in the state, really, and check out books. But it is not that far, folks. I mean, from Gladstone to Milwaukee, and certainly a quick drive in a car, two, two and a half miles in each direction, is not that far. I looked up on a map, the libraries of Multnomah County, which are award-winning library system, and it is a long drive, longer than that stretch from Milwaukee to Gladstone for probably the majority of people in Multnomah County. So I don't think it's unreasonable that they have a library in Gladstone. The question is, how big is it? Is it adequate? And certainly, the question is, why hasn't Gladstone reached out and talked to these people for so long? We went through this about two years ago. It was contentious then. I would have thought that they'd get together and at least talk about this now. They're required to, and I appreciate the board's support in that regard, and hopefully this thing will be over. For those of you who use wood stoves, we did talk about wood stoves. If you do not have a state-certified wood stove, please get rid of it, because it's polluting the air and it's unfair to the people who suffer because of that. Also, we had a report from Dr. Present about the hepatitis A response, and Sandy, they, a food service worker at movie theater, had been found to have hepatitis A, which is contagious, and in rare cases, it can kill you. But our emergency response team has set up vaccination stations, and they will continue that until they're sure this is not, does not spread as highly contagious. So that's good to see that they're up on those things. The, next week, we have a lot going on, not at our business meeting, I've got to say, it's kind of, kind of short, which is nice for a change. Here's my comment for the day. I think it's, it's appropriate, because I recently lost a friend of mine. I was surprised that I lost him, and certainly in regards to those, including some of us who've lost somebody they love. Grief never ends, but it changes. It's a passage, not a place to stay. Grief is not a sign of weakness, nor a lack of faith. It is the price of love. Ladies and gentlemen, there being no further business for the Clackamas County Commissioners this day, this meeting is adjourned.